It being six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order on Monday, June 2nd, 2025. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May 19, 2025.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as Princeton.
Second.
Any comments, corrections? All in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it's unanimous. Next up, we have board reports. Ella, can we start with you?
Sure. So with regard to Eva, the Enfield Village Station has been very busy, uh, since things left downtown. Um, I think people have noticed that the flower barrels are out, there are new banners hanging downtown that were put up over the weekend. Um, and uh, that is the update from them unfortunately due to uh circumstances be under control. We did cancel the Shaker seven this year, um, but we will redouble our effort for next year. Then the Heritage Commission has been uh busily working. Does someone want to make some comments? Oh, um, the Heritage Commission has been working on the RSA 79 recommendations for um tax abatement for barn renovation.
Oh.
Um, they're circulating, they've done some background work, they revived the foreign inventory. They've been circulating proposed guidelines throughout the committee and then they will share them on the slide board when they're all consensus.
Yeah, I really look forward to that.
Yeah.
Much. Hey, Eric?
All right, uh, planning board having a good meeting last week. We did a debrief from the Saturday forum for the Hefner Hup Grant. It's interesting to hear sort of what all the other tables had said. Uh, and then we had a large, well, we have a single lot merger off Party Road, uh, the lots on the other side of the rail trail. Party Road made merge and then uh, continuation of the central uh discussion around Larry Farms. Uh, the girl who was back in thought group planning board through their proposed plans as they stand at the moment. And they're preparing an application uh for some time this summer.
Thank you. Tracy?
On the Energy Committee, we had a discussion about the upcoming adjustment of uh the Enfield rate, uh, which should come in at the end of this month. It will be not until this board has already met and therefore this board won't be able to discuss it, but it'll go to Ed. And I would imagine you might contact this board to just see if they want to move, if there's a likelihood of the new rate being below uh competitive rates. You'll know that in the information that you'll get whether they are actually, Enfield community rate is lower than Liberty Utilities, for example, uh, which would potentially trigger what we call the Enfield rate as it was adopted by town meeting. Uh, but that follows this meeting, it doesn't happen until about the 29th of the month, unfortunately. So the only way will be once Ed has it to communicate to each of us as to whether there's movement there. Um, and then other than that, we discussed uh the idea that we want to let folks who have solar systems know that there's a credit system where they could sell their credits to the utilities for potential few dollars. And we want to put together some information, we have a list, we want to put together some information that we can contact solar power owners. And let them know that there's a credit out there that they may or may not be interested in, entirely up to them. Of course, uh, I will also, yes, ma'am.
What would this be like in response to people who are saying that they have solar and they're feeling left out of the negotiated slower rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. It it could be a few dollars anyway, directly from your utility supplier.
Okay.
So we want to get that out there. Um, on Thursday, also, I'm going to mention the Community Resilience Building Workshop. I didn't know if that was in your notes.
If there's anything that I think I need to add, I will.
Terrific. I've had a very good uh community resilience building workshop uh this past Thursday, had a couple of dozen attendants. And we talked about current and future physical hazards, um, strengths and vulnerabilities to the town such as flooding, extreme temperatures, fluctuation in temperatures, landslides, road closures, et cetera, and discussed the things that Enfield has uh as its resources to assist in the eventuality of these things coming from, you know, police, fire, ambulance, and the DPW. Very good communication uh from everyone, a lot of learning curve on the part of a lot of folks as to what the town is capable of doing. Uh, it also showed that the town is well positioned with a number of strong committees and a number of uh very strong, well-organized administrative skills to support uh the community in the event of any issues. Because we have the community center, we have Whitney Hall, we have the new emergency services building. Uh, and so for folks that were in this building workshop, a few of which were not a town, were from out of town, uh, they were surprised at the capabilities of the town of Enfield when it comes to potential hazardous mitigation issues like this.
Thank you. Aide?
Conservation Commission has not met, um, they meet once a month and they will be meeting this Thursday, the fifth, I believe. Haven't seen a packet now, so. I expect maybe Class Six rooms will be on there again.
Thank you, thank you. And next to the Town Manager's Report.
Right, um, I'm gonna start just slightly different as you guys got in your packet and you see in front of you. We launched our new agenda software this last week. Um, hopefully you guys like it, we'll be kind of playing with it back and forth as we're getting adjusted to it. But um, you should have got a link that was interactive and you can see your packet like back and forth. A few things I've told you guys in the past that'll be nice with this is they will store on that site that you went to. So at any time, if we need to look up packets from whenever we started this forward, could be able to just search specific criteria and be able to find packets from the past. And we will, um, hopefully talk to Whitney yet, but there's also a minutes portal on it, which pulls a lot of the documents over. Um, I did like it for future type meetings, we'll have to adjust on how much detail we're putting in. But when it gets done, it kind of lives in a similar document, so it looks like the agenda, but there's some motions in there. So um, we'll play with that moving forward. We did take a little time, the packet that you can print straight from the program doesn't have the extra pages in. So it's a little weird, you almost have to just read it like a book. So um, we may go through some of those cycles moving forward, but it's a, it's going to be a great efficiency, it's going to save staff a lot of time and hopefully you guys find it a lot more useful. It also, there's page numbers on the packet, so as we're going through policy and stuff in the future, it'd be easier to identify page numbers and get to them. So um, that's the first thing in my report. Um, staff report has not changed much, the PD's still looking for a full-time police officer. We're still moving through the process with a certified part-time police officer, but we do think that process will be done before we move into the new public safety building. So it's getting, getting really close and it'll be nice to have somebody that can fill in and be needed. Um, wanted to thank a lot of different people for the Memorial Day festivities and things that we had this last week. I wanted to start by thanking the DPW crews, the facility and grounds crews. Um, I personally got a lot less complaints this year than I had in the past, I think everything looked really good. Um, I'd also like to take some time to thank Emily in the Police Department for their. I was thanking Emily in the Police Department for the work that they did putting the Memorial Day parade on. And then, as I put in the um newsletter, that I wanted to take them, take a moment to thank the Mascoma High School Band, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Fire Departments, and Ambulance crews from a couple of different towns, especially ours. And the many veterans that participated in the parade, Police Department as well. But uh, just like to thank that and I'd like to thank all the residents that came out. I was personally was a little concerned, I was at Veterans Park looking down going, it's a couple of minutes away and no one's here. And then the parade came in and a whole bunch of people followed it. So ended up being a really good event and I just thank everybody that helped put that together. Uh, we had our first Citizens Academy class last week. Um, didn't know really what to expect, but we had 15 of our 17 participants showed up. It ended up being a very good class, like to thank Alice and Rob for their help in putting that class on. And we've heard quite a few good comments from the the first class and we look forward to the rest of them hopefully being as good or better than that class was. Um, Whitney Hall Public Safety Building, um, most of the interior punch list in Whitney Hall is now complete. They're doing some minor patching and painting and a few cleanup things, um, mostly two, two punch list items that had to be done. So we're hoping to get that done and then exterior punch list stuff has started and we're, we're looking for some, some bigger stuff to get done. That'll really start to change the outside a little bit where we have landscaping coming and the final paving is coming soon. Um, I have asked them to kind of coordinate, there's a couple of places in the sidewalk that could be pulled up that some in over the winter. I asked the landscaper, it's the same person that does the excavation, ask him, please don't come pull the sidewalk up and then leave and leave it for three or four weeks before it gets paved. So trying to coordinate those two together with the payers. Um, the, the Public Safety Building is um slightly delayed, but we plan on taking possession of the building in the next week or so. We completed the punch list walkthrough last week and they're currently working on that. Um, one thing I've missed on Whitney Hall, as asked at the last meeting, I've been talking with the audio visual people to see if we can get a date when that might be done. Um, the closest we can get right now is by the end of August is what they're, I don't want to say what they're shooting for, they'd like to get it done sooner. But we have multiple items that have been ordered and have not shipped and they cannot get a date from the manufacturer when it'll ship, so.
It's in Mandarin.
We're hoping, it might be. But we're hoping to get it done by the end of summer, I have been working with the clients and them to, to organize cutting in a little bit bigger floor box and different things so we can get the right equipment. But we will continue working on that and keep you guys updated when that might be done. Uh, once it does get installed, we're going to need to do a little bit of work on acoustic and some acoustic damping, I'm sure. But I don't want to go buy a bunch of stuff until it gets in place and we know what we're going to need. Um, I did attend a Public Employee Labor Relations Board hearing on May 12th, I forgot to put it in my last packet, but uh, we did that, it's in regard to the uh union proposed by the DPW workers. The hearing itself was focused on the DPW Administrative Assistant and Union Services Administrator position and whether or not they had a common interest to become part of that union or not. Um, our attorneys and their attorneys had until May 30th to submit um a writ report. And then the PDRLB was gonna make a determination after that based on that one position and then the process could again, could be. It'll still take some time after that, there's gonna have to be, I think, a notice period in a vote for the employees. But something will continue to keep you updated on as it moves forward. Um, Police Department, Rankor, our new K9 and Corporal Smith will be graduating from Drug Certification School this Friday. The reports the Police Chief's been getting is from the instructors of the school is that Rankor and Captain Corporal Smith are a very good team and are top of their class. So things are going well there. Um, several members of the Police Department, I'm going to add Fire Department and Ambulance crews as well, went to the Enfield Village School Career Day, I guess I can add myself if they're cute when I was there. For some reason, my table's not as interesting as the fire truck and the police cars. Um, they went last Friday, by far the biggest attraction was Rankor and Corporal Smith outside. Was showing how they're finding hidden items, missing people. So uh, it was a great event, the kids were really excited after coming in from inside and then making over to find out what it's like to be a town manager. They're more excited. Police Department picked up their new police cruiser last week, the cruiser's equipped with um kick, has a K9 unit. The equipment includes auto cooling for the K9 partner, warning system if the vehicle gets too hot, and auto opening doors for the K9 partner to be able to get out of the vehicle if needed in an emergency. Large portion of the outfitting, all the K9 equipment plus a little more was covered by the standard K9 brand. At, and then after completing review of the, and update of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Police Chief informed me that because of the good working relationship between the Emergency Service Crews, Town Officials, and DPW, um, working as a team, we've completed or have ongoing work on 23 of the 33 actionable items and mitigation projects. Several more will be started after they move into the Public Safety Building, but I think it's important to note that this is not normal. Uh, very few of the action items were actually completed on the last two plans. So to be over 20 of those action items completed are underway. It's really good work and I'm going to lead that right into kind of what Tracy was talking about in our resilience. I think that was very noticeable during the, during the talks there and there were a lot of people that commented on how proactive Enfield was and how, how much more prepared than a lot of other places we were. So I agree, I think it was a great event that we had and it's really good to have those conversations. It was, it's also pretty interesting, we had two tables that completely divided to talk about resilience in Enfield and what the top four priorities after we brainstormed all the different resilience things. And the report that came out of the two tables was almost identical and was, it was pretty impressive to say. But um, with that, we'll be getting the, the final report from the consultants. So I don't really have a date, but that comes in, we will definitely have some sort of presentation for the select board. Um, we're excited to welcome the New Hampshire Planners this week. Um, I have asked John Clu to do some opening remarks and welcome the planners to town for the, on behalf of the Enfield Select Board. And then Eric will be helping Rob on Friday afternoon as we do a presentation on kind of the zoning changes and things that Enfield has done as our planning board representative. So we're excited to have them there this weekend, you'll see planners in the afternoon wandering all over Main Street. Uh, that would be a good thing, but um, there are over 75 planners right now confirmed to attend this event. So it's nice to bring people in and let them see all the, the work that's being, being done in Enfield.
That's an impressive number. That is.
Yeah. I'm gonna keep Rob's on a little bit too. Um, I've been a little part of that, but Rob's really taking the bull by the horns and I'm going to almost say befriended some of these businesses coming in. And the, the new brewer will be speaking to some of the planners when they attend there. And we're going to be talking about pretty much how important it was for the town to be as evolved as we were and help them through the entire process. I think that's something really commendable that we take the time to actually lead these businesses through. We know there were enough roadblocks in the way to stop this from happening, even the, to have an employee that works, that walks them all the way through the process. And I know we had many citizens, volunteers, and select board members also that, that helped with that. So I think that has a lot to be said about Enfield and the way we treat the people at the end of the staff team. So, and Rob will be attending the Upper Valley Board of Realtors General Membership Meeting this next Tuesday. Um, we are members of that organization and just wanted to let the select board know that that's one way that we, we keep in touch with the real estate market and things that are going on around the states. Also, it's been to have those relationships. Um, and then last but not least, Rob and I, and I'm sure there are probably a couple of planning board members that'll be attending the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission Annual Meeting on Wednesday, June 11th at East. We've done that the last couple of years and that's always a, a good event to attend. On to DPW, um, the Highway Department's been completing and replacing culverts that need to be done prior to road paving. All the ones that are needed to be done for paving are done at this time. The Shaker Boulevard Culvert was postponed because, um, I'll say Comcast, but Comcast on the big safe side did not complete their work in time. So we had to postpone that for a few days. Uh, we will, if they haven't already, they'll be put messaging out when they know that it'll be completed. Um, this culvert will make the 12th culvert replacement already this year. So DPW's been really busy keeping up with culvert replacements. Uh, the Water Department has dug up and repaired five gate valves that we could not get a wrench on previously. Um, doing this will help narrow the number of residents impacted when water needs to be shut off or fight with theirs. So thank you to them for being proactive as well and making sure that we can get to all those valves and things that we need to get to. Um, we do want to let people know that someone stuck a large propane cylinder into the metal recycling to avoid paying the fee. It did get caught, we didn't break anything this time, but the cost to the town was $525 in fines and requires, is requiring us, we're actually moving to a two-step recycling separation process. So we're going to be asking people to drop the metal outside to be inspected and our employees will load the metal bins. It's a little bit more work on our people, but we can continue to put things in the metal bin that are not supposed to be there. First Solid Waste Committee meeting is this Wednesday, so we're excited to get that kicked off and moving forward. And then the Hazard Mitigation Grant for the Potato Road Culvert has been submitted to FEMA. I guess I'll add one thing, I did get an email back from DGS this week that the Crystal Lake Watershed Management Plan had been accepted and considered complete, so it's not going to be hard to score. And that's my town manager's report.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I have just a couple. Do we have any progress on the camp charter? I might have missed it, I tried turning this down. It'll stop.
Not at this time. Or during the summer and help our camp office quickly. Looking for someone to run and manage the camp. Um, we will be having camp. I've heard that too. Worst comes to worst, Todd will be working a little bit extra at camp to make that happen, but we are looking for someone there.
Anything else from the board? I'll just, I'd like the new uh agenda software.
I like it, um, just a piece of learning for anyone here, might make the same mistake as I, I didn't download everything fully. I was like, I'll click on it later while when you're driving through no service. So it was a little bit of a surprise, so don't do it, I didn't download the whole thing. This is the moral of the story. But it is, I think it's really, if it's efficient for you guys, very.
It's really nice though, so we don't have it set up yet, but I will be able to get it set up where the department heads can just upload their own stuff in the future. Right now, it still needs to go to Elisa or myself to review and get uploaded, but even that is a lot faster than converting everything that you have, putting packets together.
Thank you. All right, under business, first item is Emergency Services Advisory Committee Presentation.
Were you able to pull it up?
Yeah.
Uh, we got a PowerPoint with everything. Uh, I'm good, assuming it's gonna put it up on the screen. Yes, on yours. All right, uh, listen, I'm, no, me, I'm, my name is Bill, but um, lived in town for about two and a half years, two, more than two years now, with that. Um, I'm very happy to see uh plenty of like coworkers here. Um, uh, from the committee, I think the only one we're missing is uh Dan Regan, um, unless he's online there. I don't see him. Uh, but anyway, uh, this committee was put together. Um, if we go ahead to the next slide. Okay, we'll go through and we'll look at the committee charge, uh, what we currently have. And then we did a lot of research, a lot of talking with um our three department heads and looking into other departments uh to see what we have here um compared to other places in the region, um, other regions, far off, near and far, everywhere in between. Um, to evaluate what we have, um, and what we need to do to not only uh reinforce and support what we have now, but then to anticipate any potential needs in the future, both short and long term. Next. All right, so here, same thing, evaluate um everything that we have here, operations procedures, mutual aid agreements um for the Police, Fire, and EMS Departments. Okay. Uh, review all of those and like I said, uh, make sure that we're prepared for the future. So a little bit of background about the town. There it is. Um, in Enfield, our median age of residents is 43.4, okay, we're the second highest in the US.
Really? Wow.
Uh, is that second highest in the US or is that supposed to be New Hampshire?
I think New Hampshire's the second highest in the US.
Okay. Okay, so we're above average in New Hampshire and New Hampshire's second highest in the US. Um, we've continued to grow from 2010 to 2023. Um, also the residents over 65, uh, which historically are the ones that are more frequently utilizing emergency services um has also increased, um, and projections are that it's going to continue to increase. So utilization of those ser, emergency services is expected to continue to climb. Okay. Um, and 22, you, uh, as you can see there, the average age or the median age for people calling for 911 services is 62. Um, I mean, surprisingly, we have more patient, more people 70 to 74 years old than we do under five. So definitely the services that are getting utilized are more so from our more experienced populations than our less experienced populations. Uh, next, so we'll start off with Police Department. Uh, first off, before we go too much further, I did want to say that at least personally, um, as we learned more and more about what services we already have here in Enfield, I was very impressed um compared to other places that I've lived from Florida, Virginia, Jersey, Pennsylvania, and now up here. Um, with what is already established, um, the level of services that all three departments provide to Enfield is very commendable and, and very impressive. Uh, when we are, as the emergency reports or that you were referring to indicated, were well-positioned, especially compared to some of our neighbors um in the region and across the state. Uh, so our Police Department right now, seven, seven full-time police officers, um, one full-time coordinator, one part-time, and one police assistant, um, average response time is three to eight minutes. Um, one of the things I think a lot of us liked about our Police Department is, is very uh community policing focused. Um, not just about numbers, tickets, getting speeders, it's there for the community, for uh, for the citizens in, in Enfield. Um, the bottom, just real quick, uh, nationally, um, there's one police officer, or 2.8 police officers per thousand citizens is the national average for that ratio. New Hampshire's na, national average is two, um, ours is 1.6. Uh, that being said, our officers are responding to more than the average calls for service. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, uh, but those call for, calls for service are not only uh 911, I'll say initiated, but also self-initiated? Correct. Okay, so it's a combination of both situations where the officer is the one that's, hey, I see something, I'm going to do it, you know, do this, whether it's community, uh, community-based or other, and then. Community-based or other, and then also when people call for assistance. So right now we are at a, the statistic that we were focused on was the percentage of that breakdown, the number of percentage of calls that. Are initiated from nine-one-one call center that the officers are requested to respond to versus the percentage of calls in which the officer initiates the response. So which those, the officer-initiated responses are, whether it's traffic stops, whether it's. Community service, anything that the officer sees that they, that they are, have time to get involved with. That ratio there, the sixty-forty split, that's calls for service. Community initiated versus self-initiated calls for service, and that right there is very indicative of a community-focused, community-based policing culture. Okay, and that's what we found that we really liked, and that's what we wanted, we would recommend that we try to keep that type of culture. Any questions? Have I said anything, boss?
No.
No, yeah. So currently budgets for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, I believe this has already been reviewed, we're just up here for reference. Okay, for the police department. Any, I think I have self-explanatory, our short-term recommendations. Fortunately, we're in a situation where we are where we want to be. Where, where our goal is, and so we don't anticipate any immediate changes to the size of the force at this time. No major changes to equipment, staffing, or anything like that. No surprises, so to speak, that we found that we would recommend. The only thing that we were looking to recommend is coming up with an incentive program. To train the police officers as either emergency medical responders or emergency medical technicians. So that way to lower acuity nine-one-one calls, they can respond out. Assist the caller as needed, evaluate the situation and determine whether or not they actually need an ambulance, because. As you'll see later on, we contract with Lebanon from six A to six P, Monday to Friday, for them to primary respond to all of our EMS calls. And there is a decent percentage of those that are low-acuity calls that they don't end up transporting. But we still have to pay Lebanon because they came out. So if we were able to cross-train some of our police officers. To be EMTs, then they could go out, evaluate, see what's going on, and if it's a situation where someone just needs help getting up. You know, they can handle that, and as EMTs, they could do a, a brief medical evaluation on the patient. And get a signed refusal, so that way, if the patient doesn't need or want to go to the hospital. That would be our main. Recommendation for the police department. So, and of those calls that Lev is handling, that's sixty-six percent of the total EMS calls for the town of Enfield. Okay, and of the calls that they responded to, almost half of them, they didn't end up transporting. So just on what we're paying Lebanon, that's, as you can see there, thirty-eight thousand dollars that potentially could be saved. Well, yeah.
Is that thirty, that thirty-eight thousand in savings? Would that be per? How many, how many officers would we have to train, cross-train?
Well, this is, this, thirty-eight thousand would be total, and we have seven officers. If they all would want to be trained, then. Yeah, we could figure out some number.
Yeah, like what would be the right, what would be the right number? What would be the right investment to realize that save?
I think that's something we need to discuss.
So the big expense is obviously training. Okay, but right now there is a state grant that that expense is a hundred percent reimbursed. So they, the recommendation from the committee would be stipend to the officers as long as they maintain their EMT. Then an extra two thousand dollars a year stipend. That way they can go out and if we're talking about seven officers, that's still a fifty percent cost savings. Greater than fifty percent cost savings, because if that's seven officers, that's what, fourteen thousand dollars a year, and if we're paying Lebanon thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. In addition to that, the other side benefit is the police department, that their average response time was six minutes? Three to eight minutes? Okay, we'll see what the average response time from Lebanon is in a minute, but you'll see there's a little bit of a difference. So if they're able to get there quicker. Help the community sooner and potentially. More efficiently. Would be win all around, both from the, the citizen side as well as from the financial side.
Because we can't bill, if they're non-transport, they're non-billable.
Correct. But as soon as Lebanon gets dispatched and they.
We pay them whether we can bill it or not.
Correct.
And if they transport, they do. So.
Even better.
So, okay. So this is a breakdown of what, what it would cost us to get the officers trained. So the EMT force cost is, like I said, completely reimbursed, and then there was additional funding. Through state grants that we could get for an additional thousand dollars. So ultimately, per officer, it would cost the town only a thousand dollars each for the first year. Okay, after that, it would be two thousand dollars a year as long as they maintain their EMT. Alright, I believe we had five officers that were interested in it.
Interested or already.
Okay, so the ones that are already, we wouldn't have to pay the original, it would just be the two thousand dollars stipend. Okay, their priority would still be police-related activities, so if they're busy on something else, that is their primary role. So we would still dispatch, obviously, Enfield ambulance and or Lebanon in that case. Any questions? Just looking long-term recommendations, okay, we developed for each of the departments, we refer to them as trigger points. Basically, the point in time or some kind of metric to indicate when the town should start looking at expansion. Adding an additional officer, adding, you know, more police or EMTs or firefighters or something like that. For the police department, we focused on that sixty-forty call type split, calls that they were requested to respond to versus calls that they initiated. Most community-focused police departments seem like they maxed out at about seventy-thirty split for that. Once you get to that point. Then the officer is not able, doesn't have the time to do as much community-focused policing activities. Being there, doing the, I'll say do extra things that the police department does, whether it was, you said, what were some of those things, Keith?
For the community-based stuff, so on, on one end of the measuring stick, you would be, those are your motor vehicle stops, your unlocks. On the other side of your measuring stick is. Like when we stop and play basketball at the park and we, you know, do movie in the park and, and. Stuff like that, so it's a big gamut, but it's, that's your self-initiated stuff, your, your other stuff are your, your domestics, your, your assaults. Those things that are called directly into nine-one-one or to dispatch.
So we'd like to see the department stay below seventy-thirty, so what we came up with was sixty-five-thirty-five. Once the chief notices that the ratio of requested calls versus self-initiated calls gets to sixty-five-thirty-five, that would be the time. That the town, we would recommend that the town start looking at adding an additional officer.
And we just add that that would be over a period of time.
Correct, it wouldn't be just a one-time thing, this would be maintaining sixty-five-thirty-five or higher, so to speak, for a couple of years consistent. So, because we all know that one year can throw off all kinds of numbers, so if it's consistently over two years. Sixty-five-thirty-five or sixty-six-thirty-four or higher, that's when the town should start looking at adding, in this case, I think it was an eighth officer.
And we did see that last year when we were short officers, that the self-initiated stuff really went away.
So, but this year we're back closer to the sixty-fourty again. Questions for the police department? Have I missed anything, chief? Nope. Okay. Yes, sir?
Is it appropriate for? About any questions now or later?
Should we get through this presentation first? Let's get through the presentation first.
Okay. Fire Department. We have in Enfield, one part-time fire chief, twenty-four paid on-call firefighters. So basically they are paid for when they are doing fire department activities. There are fourteen members that are level one or higher training, level one is interior-rated chief. Okay, so those are people who have gone through the State Fire Academy and have their qualifications to. Put on an air pack and mask and everything else and go into a, some type of burning or had a burning structure or. It's referred to as an IDLH, and immediately dangerous to life and health atmosphere, where they take their own air supply with them. And then a breakdown of what those different level of firefighters are paid when they're doing the fire department activities. Okay. Budget. Again, I believe this is addressed in other meetings, but twenty-twenty-four versus twenty-twenty-five. And then short-term recommendations, right now, short-term recommendations. Just continuing to improve. Coordination between the fire department, EMS department and police department, whether that's through cross-training, cross-certifications. Just kind of interdisciplinary training activities. That kind of thing, just working on those synergies to be more efficient overall. Right, additional marketing and just. Public relations, trying to recruit more people. That was a common theme that we saw between the fire department and the EMS department as well, is that staffing, you know, more. Paid-on-call or formerly volunteers are always needed and appreciated. So, but that is a national trend, is a lot of paid-on-call departments or across the country are. Seeking more volunteers, more providers. For the fire department, we were looking for that trigger point again. In this case, what we were looking at is the average calls per day. Right, once we see, right now, in twenty-twenty-three, it was an average of point-six-five calls per day for a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight calls, twenty-twenty-four went up a little bit. To two-sixty-six for that average of point-seven-three. Just looking at different departments, again, across, across the region, across the country. Some looked at transitioning to hiring career staff once they reached one point five, others were closer to two-point-oh calls per day. And we decided to settle in the middle of that at one point seven-four calls per day, and. That's not necessarily, yes, this is absolutely when we need to do it, it's just a recommendation at that point, once we hit that average. For two or more years that we start looking into and budgeting for full-time fire department staff. Okay, and that full-time model might be twenty-four-seven, that might start out as six-to-six, Monday to Friday, similar to the paid coverage. That we're currently paying Lev for, for the EMS services, or somewhere in between, but once we hit that number, we, we really should start looking at. Some type of aid staffing. So fortunately, looking at where we're at now versus that trigger point, we're a couple of years off. Because between last year and this year, that went up, what's that, thirty or twenty-eight, twenty-eight calls last year versus, or two years ago versus last year? So we've got a couple of years before we go up another two-hundred. Okay, EMS. This is, like I mentioned earlier, right now we are currently six A to six P, Monday to Friday. Contracted with Lebanon to be our primary response. Right, right now, as soon as that ambulance rolls out the door and they request, what they do is they request additional staffing to come in to backfill their town. As soon as they make that request, that's the indicator for when we get billed for the call. Because essentially we're paying for the extra people to come in to backfill. That would be the benefit to the police department coming out, because they would be the primary dispatcher, like I said, for the lower acuity, non-critical calls. They already go out to just love every nine-one-one call that comes out into our town. But by having them be cross-trained, that would allow them to take care of those lower acuity, non, not, not as urgent calls. And determine what the patient actually needs before sending the full cavalry. Right? More than half of the calls do fall into that timeframe, six A to six P. Our Enfield ambulance squad or fast squad responds to calls. Six P to six A, so overnights, all week, all week long and then all weekend long. So from Friday at six PM until six AM Monday morning. Our Enfield ambulance squad is first call for all medical calls. Alright. As a volunteer, as a former volunteer, I can tell you that those calls, yes, that's six-to-six, but when that call goes out at five o'clock in the morning, that is challenging, especially if you need to be at work at seven. Because responding on the call, getting, taking care of the patient, transporting the patient, getting back to the station, doing the paperwork. And restocking the truck takes a decent amount of time. So I just, I commend what they're, what they're doing. Right now, we are paying Lebanon three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars a call. That is regardless of what they get reimbursed from either insurance or Medicare Medicaid. That number does change from year to year. I believe that changes at the midpoint of the year. We are expecting, and I believe we've gotten kind of a heads up that that number is expected to go up in the next year or two. How much, we don't know, but we are expecting that to be increased the next, next time, which is July, I believe is the next increase.
Um, I think we're contracted right now, but next year we'll be signing a new contract.
So, that may adjust. The metrics that you see, that you'll see coming up here in a minute. Alright, Enfield EMS, currently average response time is sixteen minutes. Lev EMS from when they are dispatched from Lebanon, from the Lebanon nine-one-one dispatch center. Is fourteen minutes, however, we got to take into account the fact that when people in Enfield, citizens of Enfield, call nine-one-one. They, that call gets routed to Hanover. Hanover's nine-one-one dispatch, they're officially the, or unofficially the regional nine-one-one call center. They do not dispatch for Lev Fire. The Lev Fire Department, so they have to take that call, take all the information, and then transfer that over to the Lev dispatch side of things, so that way they can then. Dispatch the ambulance to Enfield, and that takes an average of two to three minutes to happen. So Lev. Lev's average, if you take that into account, technically is longer than our own town's average. So with Enfield's response, take into account, okay, sixteen minutes, yes, feels like a long time, but our providers are not in-house. Okay, they are at home, they're sleeping. They're, you know, maybe outside working in the yard, in the garden, whatever, and a call goes out, they literally drop what they're doing or get out of bed. Throw some clothes on, throw a uniform on, get in their car, respond to the station, then get in the ambulance and respond out to the house. So that all takes time, as we know, it takes a little bit of time to get from one side of town to the other and back again. Okay, sixteen minutes is, is really good. Alright. The national average, as you can see there, is fourteen minutes eighty percent of the time. So. Questions? No. Alright, in twenty-twenty-three, we had three-hundred-and-sixty-one total calls. I believe in twenty-twenty-three, we were shorter, we had less personnel?
Yes.
Okay, in twenty-twenty-three, we had some people, I believe, was it military?
Yeah, we still have, they're gone right now.
Okay, so we had even less staffing on the rescue squad or on the ambulance squad in twenty-twenty-three, that's why you can see that even though. The calls were lower and higher, like the, the, the trend doesn't necessarily match. Even though the calls were a lot more in twenty-twenty-four, Lebanon transported less calls than they did in twenty-twenty-three. It's because we had better staffing in Enfield, so we were able to handle more of the calls. As you can see, in twenty-three, transported thirty-six versus twenty-four, we transported eighty-one. So we did significantly better. So we did significantly better, um. Go ahead. Yep, currently we have ten members, uh, in the, uh, ambulance squad. Uh, one of them's a emergency medical responder, six of them are EMTs, two of them are advanced DMTs, and one of them's a paramedic, um, with the appropriate pay level, um, they're listed below, um, most ambulances have, have EMTs responding on them. Um, in Enfield, the, uh, the ambu-, Enfield ambulance is licensed up to the advanced EMT level. Um, so the provider, the paramedic, um, doesn't necessarily have the, uh, equipment, medications or whatnot to function fully at the paramedic level. Um, that's a significant jump in cost, uh, of equipment and whatnot, uh, up to that level. So when the squad goes out and needs a paramedic, either Canaan or lead comes out to assist?
Usually it's level.
Usually it's level, okay. Um, but like I said, the, the, the amount of work both these guys and guys and gals and the ones on the, the fire department do is fantastic. Um, yeah. Uh, their budget for twenty-four and twenty-five? Okay, again, I think this is already out there in public. Okay. Uh, short-term recommendation for EMS, nothing catastrophic, very similar to fire department. Uh, just better coordination, better train, uh, some more training, interdisciplinary, cross-training, things like that. Um, and more marketing, trying to get more recruits in there for the, the rescue squad, as you can see, that's ten people. Okay, covering the town every night and all weekend long. So, um, idea, ideally, there'd be a few more than that, at least. Okay.
General marketing.
Um, again, that trigger point that we were looking at, uh, so once, what we came up with, uh, was essentially, it looked, uh, to us, rough estimates, uh, cost include, not just salary, but including benefits, whether it's retirement, the whole package, um, for two, uh, daytime EMS providers to cover that six-to-six section, uh, during the week they currently lead covers, uh, is estimated to be around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we were using that as our gauge as to when, uh, when it would make sense to look at hiring inter, uh, town staff, um, town provider, medical providers to staff the ambulance during that timeframe.
Hmm.
Um, so the trigger point that we came up with was about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. So once lead gets to the, uh, our bill to Lebanon gets to that point, that was when, okay, we should start looking at bringing this in-house instead of continuing to pay Lebanon to do it. Okay, um, that being said, when we get close to that point, the other thing that should be considered is what our current reimbursement rate is from the insurance companies. Cause every call that lead responds to, we do not have anything to do with the bill. So lead get, lead fills those insurance companies and lead keeps the proceeds from that. So on the conservative side, if we hire daytime EMS providers, they could recoup an estimated thirty-four thousand dollars in billing. That's very conservative, that's looking at approximately thirty, thirty percent reimbursement rate. Okay, um, the better the reimbursement rate we're able to do, um, the higher that number's going to be. So, uh, when I crunched some simple numbers, uh, I think I was up to fifty-eight, I emailed you.
We're in that, we're in that fifty, a little higher than fifty, but that's taking into account insurance adjustments that come out of that. And with the new bills going through the legislature, what the insurance pays is what we're gonna get, we're not gonna be allowed to bill anything over and above that. So there's some, some big changes coming on the, on the bill line. So something we should definitely keep considering, but there is, there is an amount, but the other good thing, I guess, with that, no surprise billing is what they call it, is the insurance companies will be expected to pay an amount, so we'll kind of know what that is going to be.
Okay.
Should we have a trigger point, um, for response time? The reason I'm asking is that is critical to keeping most people alive out here, right, it's, with an aging population, so right now, I think we have a very respectable response time, but say for whatever reason, staffing, people move away, um, you know, obviously, we all know how competitive it is to get any kind of employee, should we be looking at a, if we hit X number of minutes on average, should we be? Because sometimes you decide that it's not, it's not the money that matters, you want to keep your citizens alive.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I want to keep our people in, we're, we're in jail, so I guess I've, I have them, I, I would like to see us consider that.
Okay, um, that is, that is, uh, one of the other benefits of if we were able to get the police department cross-trained. Uh, because like, with, like, we showed earlier, three to eight minutes was their response time.
Yeah.
Um, and if they're trained as EMTs, they can, EMTs can handle everything up and up to and including cardiac arrest. Um, they can get on scene, start to treat the patient, start to stabilize, um, and then any, uh, what medicine refers to as high acuity, so critical calls, um, I believe the fire department also gets dispatched on like cardiac arrests or major calls?
Yes, echo, echo.
Yep. Okay, um, so any call like that is going out to all three departments, the police department, fire department, and EMS department. And lead, okay, and lead. Um, so we have plenty of backup in there, um, yes, if we do start to notice, um, that is something that we can also look at, if all of a sudden our response times are climbing. Um, I think we would start off first by looking at why. Um, why are they climbing?
Hey, we also do call it, yeah, lately I will call dispatch, don't wait.
Yeah, don't move out.
Uh, our, our neighborhood has been the recipient of many calls recently, and I super appreciate it. And we are the furthest out, so I think you guys are doing an awesome job. I want to depersonalize it, so that in the sense that, um, we say we're going to look at it when it hits this and we're not gonna point fingers, we can have the analysis of why, but we also should be weighing out, you know, when we hit, I'm just gonna pick twenty minutes. Um, you can do the why analysis, but then you say, is it worth spending a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars to keep a couple more people alive? Yes or no, and that's a decision we would have to make at town meeting, right, when we're budgeting.
Yeah. Anything else about this?
Questions, comments from the board?
That's very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, we're not, oh, we're not done, oh, good lord.
So over, overall, um, our biggest, uh, recommendation, so overall conclusions, police department, it's, uh, well-staffed, well-equipped. Um, they are, uh, good to go right now, uh, again, we've got that trigger point, it's one we need to look at, uh, recommend, looking at another officer. Um, fire and EMS departments, both always could use more staffing. Um, it's one of those cases where when you have a big incident happening, ha- happening, more hand, the more hands you have, the better. Um, and both of those departments could use more assistance in that category. Um, all three of them are, do a wonderful job keeping everyone in town safe. Um, uh, I think a lot of people have either, uh, experienced that level of service or know someone who has. Uh, no major changes or, or expenses, uh, anticipated for any of the three at this point, at least in the near future. Um, the big recommendation that we have is, uh, appointing a public safety director. So right now, all three positions, all, all three departments are in three separate buildings. Once they move into one building, the recommendation is to have one person overseeing everything coming out of that building. So the recommendation would be a public safety director, it's one building, that way there's ultimately one person saying what's going on in that building. Um, uh, recommending call, cross-training the police officers, DMTs to help in a multitude of ways, um, and then keeping an eye on those trigger points.
Do all three departments support that?
Chief?
Um, yes, yeah, that, I don't, I don't think as, and I'm going to go from, from what I am understanding as the public safety director, it's not gonna do away with the other heads of the departments.
Correct.
It would step back, I think, just so that that's clear, if my, if my understanding is correct.
Okay, can you flip that in too?
Because part of the discussion has been.
One more.
Yeah, that's. There you go.
And what we've been talking about right now, just for people to know, if we did this anytime in the near future, we would transition, probably chief Holland right now is an administrator to look over that, we would not be promoting another police chief, there would be a little bit of movement inside the police department, but it would not be adding another full-time staff position.
So that, uh, uh, public safety director would continue to be active in his traditional role?
Some, we, we have to change some stuff. Lieutenant Fry would move up a little bit, Will Smith would move up a little bit with some other responsibilities as we transitioned over, but that, that public safety director would oversee the thing, and then they would also oversee administrative process, entire building, which would lessen the administrative burden on the two, well, buddy. Yeah. Paid-on chiefs, to, to help them run this, and.
My apologies for just referring to you, I, I don't want to speak for the, the three chiefs, especially when you're right here and you can speak for yourselves. Um, we asked, we talked to, uh, Bill, we got his voice, Roy. Are you, is this something that you are in favor of or opposed to or whatnot? Supportive of, that's a word.
I, I think it's, uh, I think it's the, the next step in, um, with, with the building combined and, and, um, having, I think what a lot of people, when, when we talked about this, and your first initial reaction is, is, oh, they're taking over the fire mar-, fire department ambulance, so I think really what is this natural progression of, we're all in the same building, um, if we have a full-time person who can, uh, assist and work with, you know, uh, the part-time departments who has the full-time experience of policy writing, grant writing, uh, organization and stuff like that, it only bolsters their ability to grow. And, and I'm not saying they're not professional, but you instill the professional growth of those, uh, departments within altogether, under the same umbrella in the same building.
Thank you.
Rich?
I would, uh, as far as hiring someone, I think our taxpayers would probably have a higher stack to hire and someone else.
Yeah, we would agree with that.
Spend away it is, and I get what the other chiefs are saying, that we probably need to do something like that, but not necessarily hire someone like that, and I don't believe that someone that's gonna do all that for free.
Yeah.
So someone else is gonna have something to hold in their fight.
So the, a lot of the, a lot of that role from what, from our discussion would be more of the administrative side. So, um, it is very difficult, um, for our, uh, EMS chief and our fire chief that have other things that, on their plate, other things that they are doing, um, to do all of the administrative stuff that needs to be done in the background. Um, and we have a full-time police chief, um, that that, uh, that has been, uh, very, very helpful and stepping in as needed, because that was, as he just said, he is in there full-time. Um, uh, has the, the ability and the bandwidth. Um, and this would just allow him to, allow that person in that role to assist more. Um, cause there's a lot, a lot of work, a lot of paperwork, administrative duties that need to get done in the background, in addition to what we all see with the red truck ri-, running down the road, or the blue and white ambulance running down the road, or, or, or any of that, or the police cruiser running down the road. Um, there's a lot that needs to be done in the background, and this was basically, especially with it being in one building now, um, it just didn't really make sense to us to have three heads all in one building, you know, ultimately, it needs to make sure, to make sure that, um, everything from, whether it's building maintenance, operations in the building, coordination, who's using, using what training room, when, um, anything like that, you know, one person, one leader, so to speak, of that building.
Thank you.
Um, it wouldn't necessarily take over, um, we have an EMS specialist. He's got that, we've got a fire specialist, he's got that, and a police specialist, and he's got that, and this would be more of administratively leading.
Good explanation.
The current emergency services role that's fulfilled by the police chief now, be wrapped into that public safety director role?
It'd be that, there'd be a, from what we were looking at, and we'll do a little bit more work, if this is something the select board wants to work with, but there'd be, there'd be a little bit of cost to that, cause there'd be some shifting with a couple of people within the department that would be a little bit of a raise, if you will, but it would not be substantial, I think we were estimating somewhere in the five-to-ten-thousand-dollar range total costing, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Any comments, questions? Are you done?
I am done, sir.
Thank you, that was excellent, that was very thorough.
Professionally prepared.
Very thoughtful.
I have, have to, have to, have to call to the committee members. I just was the one that was pointed out to speak.
That was really good information.
Will you be able to post that somewhere?
Yeah.
Anything else from the board?
Not at this time, I don't think.
From the public?
Um, very, I echo the impressive presentation and the thoroughness and, and depth, um, with it. Um, you compared, um, the statistics and metrics, um, to statewide, um, versus, is there that comparison possible for, um, smaller rural communities like ours, um, that, in contrast to the cities, which are part of what you included in that, in those numbers?
Uh, so I believe the numbers that we did pull, um, a lot of them, we looked at both numbers, just the state averages, but then we did also look at communities similar in size, um, and similar to uh, population density to our own, um, both neighbors evenly around us um, and others that are farther, both in the northern and sou-, and southern ends of the state. Um, and compared that to those numbers, and it was all in line. You helped us get a lot of those numbers at.
And I would say fire EMS numbers were pulled from the rural volunteer standard.
Yeah, so a lot of those numbers, yeah, were not from, um, Concord or Manchester or whatever, they were similar departments.
And the police?
The police as well.
Uh, well, I mean, I, I, to be specific, I, I guess I'd ask which, which numbers, like, as far as, uh, average response time uh, under our, our computer system, I can, I, I've asked our calls, with a very simple, hit a button and it tells me where our average response time is, and I could, you know, break it down by call or, or this or that, but, um, the add, the numbers of officers, uh, stuff, that came from, uh, statistics provided by the state, so it's a statewide.
And is it subdivided, it will be subdivided by population or community?
The ones that are divided were the only ones that the state provided, I mean, they, they break it down.
It looks traffic.
Enfield seven, you know, this and that, but, uh, it, it, they only broke it down by, um,
So do that.
Yeah, I'd have to sit down and, yeah, do all the math.
But with that, some of the officer, like how many officers per population is what they do, and they do that at the federal level, so the smaller your community, the smaller amount of officers they recommend you have, and the bigger it gets, and that's why they do it that way, so it's based on, on population, the things that don't take into account are things like here where we have a census population of forty-five-hundred, but we know in the summer that swells closer to seven thousand or maybe a little bit more. So if we base our numbers off the forty-five-hundred, we get really busy in the summertime when a lot of people are here, and so those are things you just have to take into account, you use those national statistics.
That's a very good point, yeah.
The other thing we have, I don't want to talk too much, the other thing we have is we're right next to a, a city. So that, the, the crime statistics and the population coming in and out of ours, our city is different than a smaller town, three or four towns in, away from a, a city like that, so there's just a lot of things to look at when you're analyzing data like this.
Kurt?
Yes, um, I just have a question regarding, you, um, if the police are able to implement the EMT training program, they're able to do that, and they're first on scene, does Lebanon ambulance, can they cancel Lebanon ambulance en route and not get billed?
So.
Once it leaves the station?
Once it leaves the station and they, on the radio, request the backfill, then we get the bill. Um, what we're, what we're suggesting that we look into and consider is getting, uh, our police department, um, the ones that are or, huh?
On-site.
Essentially onsite.
Right, right.
For the lower acuity calls, for the lower priority calls, so that would be the, uh, alpha, bravo, and charlie calls. Your delta and echo are considered your life threats. And so those, we know there's an ambulance in-house at lead, so that's who's gonna get dispatched immediately, uh, along with Enfield ambulance, uh, that way, if, if any of them are around, they can go, the fire department, the police department. Um, for those first, first three, uh, alpha, bravo, and charlie, our recommendation would be, once we have the police department trained. our recommendation would be once we have the police department trained as EMTs, just dispatch them. Let them get to the scene first, figure out for sure what's going on. Because when, um, someone is having an emergency and they're calling 911, the, the sky is falling. And sometimes things get a little exaggerated, um, and, or sometimes, um, a, a, a basic life supporter and EMT is what they need just to stabilize it. Okay? And then that would allow them the opportunity to, whether they want to drive themselves to the hospital or whether they decide, no, I really want an ambulance, great, then they can request an ambulance and have them dispatched.
Yeah, I guess it all comes down to the initial call being made by the patient and the dispatcher getting the right questions asked.
Yeah.
Like it's slipping fall in the bathroom versus my chest hurts.
Right. And the dispatchers are trained to look for certain key phrases.
Yes.
Um, but again, that's, that's all information that's based on someone who is having what they perceive to be a life or death crisis. Um, whatever it actually turns out to be.
Yeah, so I, I'd just like to have, so, um, this isn't like a, a, a blind thing. We, we've talked with Lebanon, um, about this. And so an Al, an Alpha Bravo and Charlie level call is, is assigned by asking the questions, right? That when you call 911, they have a metrics they go through, and those are non-life threatening calls. What, well, if this program gets off the ground and it's, it's in place, what would happen would be when the officer signed on, he would sign on that, you know, that they're EMT certified and such. And so then during that 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, if an Alpha Bravo or Charlie level call came in, they would just dispatch the officer. There wouldn't be a race against the clock before they, they, so Lebanon would be standing by, waiting for them to get there and say, I mean, they might walk right in the door and say, yeah, roll the ambulance. Or they might walk in the door, do their assessment and say, we're all set here and stuff like that. And so, and, and just that there's not any kind of, um, questions about this. We're not just throwing this out there, we've had this conversation with Lebanon and, and Lebanon is actually on board for it because they're, um, what happens is Lebanon is very busy right now. And when they come out here for an Alpha Bravo or Charlie level call, and I'll just take a, a very simple one, that, you know, something comes in, it's an off-level call, and the minute that we walk through the door, um, the person says, there's no way I'm going to the hospital, it's, you know, such and such. Right now, we cancel Lebanon, Lebanon's already halfway here. So not only did it just cost us $366, Lebanon is out of place for that next Delta or EMO level, those are life threatening calls, out of place. So Lebanon, right away, when we talked about it, was something that if this, that would be a, a great pilot program that, you know, that it could help alleviate some of the stress that they're feeling on the other end too.
And one more question?
It's a, it's a different subject. Um, I, um, hope that your Lebanon response times, uh, truly indicate, um, that some major improvements since, uh, I was in practice here, uh, um, a few years ago when we didn't have to do it. Frequently, but when we did, we needed help and it took far longer sitting there trying to stabilize. Uh, than it would have been nice to have. So, you know, sometimes over 30 minutes.
Yeah.
Final question?
Just a quick question, on, on the certification, how, how, what's the frequency on the recertification on that?
Uh, EMT recertification is every two years.
Okay, that's provided.
Correct.
Forty-eight hours to do it then. Once you get certified, whatever you're certified in, you have to do 48 hours con ad every two year, every two years.
Now, is that something like where you get the police officer, it's EMT?
They have that.
Where you bring in a group course at that point for cost saving. Best part is doing this small group training.
Yeah.
Which I think has been happening.
Yeah, they, they, they can do that, bring in someone just to do, uh, training for the squad, for anyone that needs to be recertified. Um, and then, um, I know over at the hospital, they're trying to get more, uh, education coming out from the medical direction side of things, um, to try to alleviate some of that cost. Is the medical directors can come out and they can provide education that'll count towards that 48 hours as well.
I, I feel I need to move this along now because we have some other, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, my pleasure.
Thank you everyone. That's appreciated.
I mean, you're done, Bill?
Uh, we have next a zoning board of adjustment update, Dan Regan will present.
John, I'm sensitive to the number of things you have on your agenda. Um, this update is not urgent. If you would choose to move it to a future meeting, I'd be really happy to help you out a little bit.
Board?
I mean, if it's brief.
How much time?
Maybe 10 minutes.
You're here, you're taking the time. You've braved the traffic.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, this is something that the zoning board kicked around. And what we, um, netted out was any opportunity to have transparent communication, um, in a public forum. Uh, it's really not a bad thing. So our objective, and I'm speaking here tonight, but it's on behalf of the entire board. Um, we have some online, I can see, but, um, our objective is to do our part to ensure that there's strong communication between uh, the zoning board and the select board and the planning board. Um, there have been some recent changes to the zoning board. Uh, most recently, as a result of the election in March, Tiffany Adams joined the board. Uh, Tiffany brings some, a good experience, uh, working right now in the land use office in Lebanon. Uh, Tim Linehan has rejoined the board and Tiffany and, uh, Tim have replaced Madeline, uh, and Michael Dean. Uh, Bob Cusick has resigned, if you had, had not heard that. Uh, and we are currently searching for a new alternate to the board and I'll go into that in a, in a bit later. Um, so our board is now Tiffany, Tim, Susan Brown, Bill Finger, who's our vice chair, myself as chair, and Sally is our one, uh, alternate. All right, uh, since our first meeting as a new board, uh, in April, we've had, had four interesting cases, each one being very, very different. I won't be speaking about any individual cases, um, but just to let you know that there have been four at this point. We actually are scheduled to meet next week, but we don't have a case. So that's, uh, you can see the, the, the number of, uh, issues we have going on. It's, it's certainly, certainly manageable. We, uh, have had, um, some very good discussion at every meeting about taking, taking advantage of training opportunities. Um, ongoing training and the folks that have been around the longest are among the first to say, yes, we need to do ongoing training. Uh, the laws change, there's new cases, there's new, um, court cases that, uh, give us more insight as to the way we should be, uh, moving forward. Uh, this includes not only our own individuals, uh, training, uh, either live or through, um, Zoom, uh, opportunities, but also we've taken the opportunity to bring in our town attorney, for instance, to walk through the four new uh, zoning amendments that we voted on, uh, in March of this year. Um, and between him and Rob Taylor, we walked through them, made sure everybody was very comfortable with them. We know if a case does come up, um, we have some background on it now. Uh, we also took the opportunity to look at our, uh, ZBA fee schedule. Uh, it hadn't been reviewed since January of 2021. And the, uh, the thinking was that we want to have the right number. Because if you have too low a number, that means the individual taxpayers are having to pay for somebody filing for an application. If you have a too high a number, that's never been the intent is for the, the town to make money off of zoning applications. So we wanted to make sure we had the right, the right numbers. So the way we went about it is, we looked at some other towns around us, uh, a number of other towns around us, but in the words of my mother, we don't care what the other kids are doing. Um, we also went and we looked at, uh, how much does it cost us? So how much does it take, cost us with Rob's time, with Chantel's time, um, and with the mailings and everything else? And we went, uh, from a previous, uh, hearing fee schedule of $150, uh, up to $225. Um, so an increase, yes, but we felt that that was more in line with, uh, what it's costing the town, um, in, in a fair place to be. So we're currently, uh, in the process now of looking at our rules of procedure. Those have not been updated since October of 2021. Um, so it seemed like it was time to take a look at those. We might not update anything, um, but we, right now, we're looking at what is the process we should go through? What should that look like in order to make sure that, um, we, uh, are doing, uh, and have captured in the rules of procedure, what needs to be there? Uh, and Tiffany is taking the lead on that, um, and at the next meeting next week, she'll come in and recharge ourselves not with saying what needs to be changed, but what should the process look like to go through to review these rules? And then we'll decide if we go through that process and then we'll get into the, okay, what needs to, to be revised, if anything. Um, I mentioned that we do have an opening for an alternate. Um, we were sensitive to, um, some of the, uh, alternate situations in town over the last couple of months. Uh, we want to make sure that we had a very transparent process. We had an application, uh, people filled out the application and that timeline is May 15th to June 15th. Uh, the board will then review those applications, June 16th to the 8th, at which time we'll have a scheduled board meeting and we'll take a vote. Um, there has been some discussions as well about how many alternates should you have? Um, where we netted out was two is the right number. The reason being, we want the alternate sitting at the board, uh, sitting at the table and being involved in the discussion on each case. When it comes to voting, it's only the members that are seated, typically the, the standing five. Um, but if necessary, one of those alternates will step up. If we had five alternates, we can't run an effective meeting with five people sitting at the table. So what we decided is we'll, we'll stick with two and if we have more applicants, um, we'll encourage others to please attend the meetings, get up to speed with zoning and process and everything. Um, and just the way things turn over, you, you never know when we're gonna need to pull somebody else in. So that's the way we're, we're moving forward with that. I did talk to Rob today and he said we have at least two, uh, folks that have filled out the applications. That's, that's a good thing. Um, and again, the way I envision this is maybe once a year, if you all see that it's worthwhile, come in, spend 10 minutes and say, hey, here's what's going on. Um, if you think it's a waste of your time, we don't have to do it at all. Um, or we can do it just as needed. Um, I'm gonna be sitting down at the planning board next week and having a similar, uh, discussion. Um, happy to answer any questions that you might have or listen to any comments that you have and then certainly from the public as well.
I think it's great. Um, I would however, rather than once a year, suggest that depending on the workload.
Yeah.
You could end up increasing, uh, coming back here and letting us know how things are going.
Sure. Yeah.
And a question I direct to you, we don't need to do anything about improving the fee, do we? You're able to do that.
Great, yeah, great.
They're wholly independent.
Yeah. No, it's an important, uh, committee. It was my first elected position was in ZBA. And I really enjoyed it, it's challenging, it'd be a little controversial once in a while, but I learned a great deal about town, I think.
I think that two is the right number, that is a very helpful in general for us because I think we as a board need to make some decisions about how, when we're adding alternates, right? We just don't keep adding and adding and I, I like that you shared that with us.
I like your philosophy, how, how alternates work into the, uh, into the meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
I am sensitive, I forget who said it, but I'm sensitive to the fact that we're a standalone board. So I don't ever want to give anybody the impression we're coming here looking for direction, but we are looking to have good communication.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, but there is, but part of the value is, is having all the boards on the same page of the process. I think having best practices and I think you're doing it, so yeah.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say that I think it's super helpful. Uh, it was reassuring to have you come here and touch base at a time where there's been so much shifting in, with the zoning amendments and the changes. And then one of the things you said was that you've recently been educated on them and you're also good about it. So that was reassuring too.
Great.
Thank you.
You want to ask, is any, if not, good, any questions?
Just look, I think you're right to, uh, the, uh, because if you have too many alternates, they don't show up because they know they're not going to. You know, if you've got four alternates, there's only a chance one of them's gonna get called up and all of a sudden they're showing up for meetings and they're going, why am I here?
Right.
If you've got two, there's a good chance that they're gonna get called up because you have either recruses or somebody doesn't show up. I think two's a good number for you.
They've, um, having observed, uh, from it seems, uh, several of your meetings, I, I think your process for the various case hearings that you've had is really excellent as well. And, and the way you're approaching this makes a great deal of sense.
Good, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Next, parking ordinance review, and we'll be setting a public hearing date.
This will be in your style, John. I made the changes? There you go. There you go. Uh, yeah, I just made the changes for the recommendation of the board. I just wanted to get you a copy, you know, before the, you know, before the next, uh, meeting so we can put it on the agenda for the, whatever required public hearing, so we have to have.
We don't have to have any.
Oh.
But we should have one.
Okay, there we go. All right. I will just add, real quick, uh, a resident came in the station today and was asked about parking and stuff like that, some concerns and, and when I talked about the process that's going on, you know, we're on step two, step three, step four, he was, he was very happy to hear that the town's taking a proactive, uh, moving in the right direction.
So are we good, folks?
I, I had just two basic questions and they may be based on state law, but, um, if we're lobbying, fine, the remittance goes to the general fund, is that how that works?
You know, parking.
Do we?
Yeah, so.
Do we need to specify in the policy or is that?
We don't, it's by state law, it's by state law. So, um, if we, if we write a, um, if we write a parking fine, it can't be contrary to the, uh, it can't be in contrary and/or substitute to state. Um, stopped and standing parked prohibited. Um, and that fine would have to be paid within, uh, within 72 hours at the tower hall and that would go to the, to, you know, that's the only place that can accept a payment for it. And if they don't after 72 hours, we can, uh, always, but we can, uh, issue a citation, appear in court to then pay their, their fine to go to the, be paid to the town.
Something, I have a question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So if it's all part of that, then how come there isn't an RSA referenced here? Cause you've referenced them everywhere.
Because they're, it's a town ordinance that we're citing them on. If we cite somebody, like if, if I was to, um, issue, my big person here, a, 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 a town citation for parking for the $25, they would pay, they'd have to pay the town. If I wrote them an RSA, a, a state ticket for $263 for stopping standing parked prohibited, they would have to pay that to the state.
I mean, I just won't make the mistake and that's a limitation.
So we need to have a public hearing on this in order to put it into, uh, enforcement?
Like I said, you don't have to, but I would recommend we all just have a public hearing to let the public speak on that.
And then vote on it at the end of that public hearing?
You can, yes.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
I'd say next meeting, let's roll it along. Finish it up before.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Possibly the public hearing helps the education part.
Yeah, true.
Okay, now we're up to the Hackett Road discussion. Can you pronounce your last name for me?
Svetaka.
Svetaka.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come up here?
I would love to, sir.
It's right over there.
So, as you all are aware, you, uh, issued this letter to a certain individual in town for road improvements on the alleged class six portion of Hackett Road.
We have that letter?
I have it right here if you wish.
Not in your back.
Oh.
Because, uh, he showed up in my dooryard and was looking to start work immediately.
So.
And what he was going off in is for the zoning gentleman here, is going off your zoning map. And that's what he was using to start said road construction. I have a lot of issues with this. First of all, when did this road become a road? Because I have, you guys have copies that I have passed along to Ms. Captain Stewart over here in regards to 1892 maps and warrant articles that were presented to the Conservation Commission about discontinued roads. And if you read through all those, you can see where Good Hugh Hill Road, in succession, parts of it has been discontinued. And Talbot, King's Highway. And Talbot, King's Highway, Hackett Road, whatever you want to call this road or whatever namesake it was throughout duration. There is no reference to it ever being discontinued. State statute, RSA two twenty-nine. Highway defined highways are only such land in the mode described therefore by statute. In other words, this had to be voted on becoming town road. In other words, there should have been a warrant article when this particular road became part of town domain. I would like to wish to see that. Also, their class six designations, that is another a warrant article in order to have it changed from a class five road to a class six road. I'd like to know the date and time on that as well because that presents a very debatable argument on whether you even had a class six road to issue a permit for. Also, this is my warranty deed. This is not on file with you guys in town. I do not know why. But this is what's on file with the county deeds office in Haverhill. And if you read this, it mentions a said old road. This old road goes back to a deed that is referenced in said deed right here at the very bottom, dated nine, November twelfth, nineteen seventeen. In that, I have a copy of that. You guys should have a copy as well. That mentions the same said old road dated nineteen seventeen. My question is, this road that you are claiming as a class six road, when did it become a town road? Because it wasn't a town road in eighteen ninety-two, but it was an old road in nineteen seventeen. So that begs the question, how in a twenty-year span did this become a town road and then get discontinued? My argument is, because under said deed, I have a right of way to the adjacent track. There is a permit right of way. And per other said deed that I have given you copies of references it being at the end of the town crossroad. So as far as all documentation that I have found and representation that you guys have forthcoming to me as far as what you're basing your thesis off in, I don't see where you had a class six road to give a permit for. Because the only supporting document I got from your highway manager when he came up to my property and stake it was this easement map. This easement map has no legal value at all. As does this one. Per your documentation on class six roads, it says clearly in the last line, it is not listed on any topographical map. I do believe this is considered a topographical map. So I beg the question, where did this road come from?
Oh, yes.
I would love to hear an answer on that.
You mean, where did the road come from?
How did it becoming town road?
Are you suggesting that was never a town road?
Yes, sir, I am.
Well, then here's the issue. None of us are certified surveyors. None of us is a member of the New Hampshire Bar Association. And that's where it's gonna have to be determined. You gotta get professionals who deal with this to do it. I mean, I I'm familiar with Hackett Road. I love Hackett Road. Used to ride my horses on it all the time.
I'm sure.
It was always a road.
I'm not debating it was a road, sir. I'm just, I'm just presenting the argument that I don't believe it was every town maintained road.
Well, that's an interesting question. It's very unlikely
Down that hallway.
That people called and worked in to create that means of going from where it went to where it ended. When I rode my horses, it sort of ended for me at Route eighty-nine, but I'm sure it went further than that. Originally.
If you look on the map dated eighteen ninety-two, you will see Good Hugh Hill Road.
Yeah, that too.
And that is the road that you rode your horses out, sir. There might have been a portion of that that you veered off in, but.
It it's possible that Hackett Road led fed into Good Hugh. But here's the issue. We can't determine that sitting here.
Well, you've got, how can, if you can't determine that, then how can you issue a permit for a third party?
It's a state registered town six road. Through the state.
There we go. Based off in what? Was it based off in?
That's how all roads are registered through the state and it's on the state.
Documentation's right here. It had to be voted upon.
Sir, up here, sir, I I'm gonna say this one last time. We are not a body of legal representation here. It does no good to argue with us. We'll say you you have some indication from the state of New Hampshire. But if you think that's wrong, you're gonna have to hire a lawyer, you're gonna have to hire a surveyor. But we're not the people to deal with.
You're the ones that are issuing the permits for third-party individuals to show up on private property and consider stark excavation work. That is my issue.
I think what's important to know, though, is to the best of our knowledge, given the information that we've been provided by the state of New Hampshire and everything thus far, we had absolutely every reason to believe that that was a class six road and has been long named. And as John has said, like, I've traveled it over the years too.
I I'm not, I'm not.
So I think we're not doing it for that reason. So if you disagree with the finding, then you work with the town manager's office to come up with next steps. Because we've acted in good faith, based on the information that is is long known and many of us have traveled that road. It's not like the road, you know, it's obviously referenced.
I I I could completely agree with you that the road existed, but I do not believe that the town ever, that the town ever maintained that road.
And and we won't be maintaining it. We're we're not allowed to. It's class six.
I don't believe it was ever a town maintained road, thus if it was never town maintained, they can never become a class six.
We can go by, but it's legally registered with the state of New Hampshire as a town road.
And when was it registered with the with the state?
On the state list of legally registered town roads. We can't tell you the date that it was put there, but it's there. And that's what we go by on every road in town.
Yes, I think the, it's not gonna be satisfying to you, but the the position of the town is that it is a class six road. It's a registered road with the state. It's been posted as a class six road for certainly living memory. And the town's position is that it is a class six road and under the rules of class six roads. And that's how we as a board and as a town are going to approach that road. And you're welcome to disagree, but the avenue for disagreeing, since that's the position of the town, is unfortunately through the courts.
So be it, sir.
Okay, I mean, I think that's sort of an unsatisfying.
That's what has to happen. That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Right, because we can't change it. We can't take it off the state list. So it's gonna be a relatively.
Just out of curiosity, what is happening to that road that aggravates you so much?
Two hundred feet of my property is getting made into roadway.
And i- is it being tarred? No.
I have no idea what's being.
Was someone putting some gravel on it?
I was never notified about it, sir. I was never notified. Which disgusts me in the a lot because if if it's a, you're talking about a property owner within your own town and you cannot even notify them of the fact that you gave permission to a third party to do work on their property.
No, it's a class six road. It's not your property.
Well, sir.
No, I, we're not gonna go back to the beginning again.
This is my tax map. And when I closed on the property in two thousand nine, do you notice what you don't see there? A class six road. I've been taxed on that property for fifteen years for the entirety of it. If I do not have possession of it, then why have I been taxed on it for fifteen years? I think that question.
So GIS maps, just as a general caution, because this is something that I learned when I spent some time on planning board. GIS maps are a good tool. They're helpful, but they never take the place of a survey and locating pins. And I have seen more than one overlay that's just not quite right. So I think you can't really rely on that as a a point of reference in the way you could having a surveyor do that work and and work with you. But I see, it it is confusing.
And I beg the question, why do I have a right of way on my ro, on my pro, on my deed? That's a certified deed that is filed with the county office for a right of way at the end of a town class five road to access the abutting track if there was a town road there that goes through that same track? There is no reason for it. That is my argument, sir.
And once again, I will say.
Give me justification for why they had a town.
We're not a court. We're not lawyers. We're not surveyors.
I'd also suggest if there was an opportunity to work with the state, because I, my guess is often it straddles a boundary line. I don't know without a survey and more details. But if there was an opportunity to work with the state, because they use that road for access to move it more towards like, I'm not saying move it, but to make sure that the the material coming in is more on their side, would that satisfy you so that it would not be under property? Like if the state were to agree, yeah, the gravel goes. Yeah. Because I I don't know if that's an opportunity or not, but the state certainly is using that. And they have.
They are using the right of way that's listed on my deed, yes.
Yep.
And that is the only one that is listed there and that goes back all the way to nineteen seventeen. And my argument is, why is this right of way there if there was a town road that?
As you heard, sir, we unfortunately simply do not have the authority to make the change that you're requesting. Within the law, which we follow in good faith, we simply don't have the authority to do anything else.
Who do I bring this to then?
You need, sir, to get some legal advice as to the next step, which may entail you going to the state, but it would certainly unfortunately entail you going to the courts as well.
I I'm ready and prepared to do so.
I think that's the step for you.
I think hiring a surveyor ought to be your first step.
I don't.
Surveyors are really good.
I have stone walls that that go back a hundred and fifty years and they have not moved.
I'm afraid the ball is in your court, sir. And if there was something that we could do legally, we could certainly discuss that. But there is not within the law, anything that we can do based on our understanding of that property.
And I would say that we come to find and the state says, whoops, we made a mistake somewhere. We can certainly have those, you know, nothing's written in stone. There's, it's it's fluid in the sense that people learn things along the way. So if we learn something, it's something the town manager's office would work with you on.
I can say we have put a pause on that till we get a little more clarity.
That is a good response.
That that is one thing, that that is an affirmative step. You heard that. That we have asked that there be no further work until we have some more information.
Yeah, because I would love to see some warrant articles on when this road was and when.
I'm only speaking to what the town manager has just informed you. For the moment, there is a stop work thing that has been asked of. And that will be the status of the situation until more information is known.
I appreciate that because it certainly leaves a lot of doubt.
My question.
We're, we're doing what we can, believe it or not.
I I get that. I'm like, I have no doubt that you you took horses up the road. I don't, I, like I said, I don't know if it was, if you had a right to it, legal right to it, because everything I can find going back a hundred and fifty some odd years never, never has any evidence been shown to where it was under town control. But that's all I can tell you.
I'm gonna have to end this portion now because we have to keep moving back.
Right then, I'll be in touch with a lawyer.
Well, in the meantime.
And FYI, my property is posted.
Okay.
Because I'm getting taxed on all of it.
Main Street flagpole discussion.
Ah, the flagpole. Not the first time. Is that not the first time?
No, it's not.
I'd like to get in writing so that.
I was gonna say, that's a great segue. That is exactly why this is on your agenda.
Perhaps we can make it the last time.
Yeah, that's the goal. Let's get in writing, take care of it.
So without going into the long, long story, this has gone very cyclical on who maintains it, who has it, chooses it. I'm gonna say, I'm really bringing this to this like board to say, do we want to keep the flagpole on Main Street? And if we do, we should legally take ownership of it. And it's really that simple.
Yeah. I think we should keep the flagpole. It should continue to be maintained. And I I my understanding, it it's the Eva does the maintenance on it and plants the flowers and we provide the flag.
It's some of it. Everything.
Some of it.
What I've told Jim for now is we will maintain the flagpole and the flag. Eva's been nice enough to plant some flowers around it. We will mow it as we're cleaning this up. I think, I think the town should do that, but if we're gonna continue moving forward and doing that, we should work with the property owners and get the correct easements in place to legally take on.
At some point, we'll probably have to paint the flagpole and all of those.
In the works.
Yeah, okay.
And they mean the town did a nice job making sure the flag.
Right, right. Okay. We were all, are we in agreement?
That's one extra piece of information in in advocating that we go ahead with this is that I learned along the way that it was about six hundred dollars for the previous property owner a year, the one who has the flagpole mentioned on their deed, to have insurance because it's considered a risk, right? That's as a private, that's a private entity. But we, but towns have flagpoles, towns have spires. It's already part of your insurance package. As I said, you don't pay more, it's not like a private entity. So you're not looking at an increased insurance cost.
If we do, it'd be feasible.
So our ownership should include the island, not just the physical piece of steel.
Yeah, we should make.
And we ought to.
We should work with the landowners to.
We should probably have a correct access because I don't want to also get to the point where we own an island in the middle of someone else's property. So it actually needs to be defined as a bit of a rectangle that is owned by the town.
It can be the circle.
Well, you need access to it. You don't want to cross private property to get to town property.
Nothing is ever simple.
But we should proceed, yes, with the necessary negotiations.
How about if I make a motion to authorize the town manager or their designated to work with the property owners at fifty-six and sixty-seven Main Street? To get a legal easement written up for the town of Enfield to take legal possession and responsibility for the flagpole that sits on both grounds?
A second.
That's a.
Did you say fifty-six? Oh, fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
He was distracted by question fifty-six.
I'm a thinker. I might be hungry.
I I just want to make sure that it includes the entire island, not just the pole.
Yep, yeah, yeah, no, we can provide whatever guidance is necessary, but this would allow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have.
Well stated, second.
All in favor? It's the animals.
I'm gonna talk about this more, though. It was more fun.
Yeah, let's, let's fight about it like two AM or something.
Let's see. Route four sewer water hookup status report. I knew sooner or later we'd get the sewage.
Oh, you were, yeah, you asked for this.
You asked.
Absolutely true.
At least I worked with Jim putting this list together from a list we had previously. They're both here, so you can pop them in. But I I did put in my letter and I recommend that, you know, if we decide to move forward, it is quite a bit of work for staff that we we start the process over one because we started pushing some people to force them to connect before COVID nineteen and then we stopped when the pandemic hit, which I think was the right thing to do. It's been long enough now that process will need to be started. It's over. But um yeah, if we're gonna move forward with that, I would ask, except for special, special circumstances that we we continue the process and then we do push forward to make them connect to the sewer. It's quite a process to get it done.
Right, right. So that first was not connected, no waiver in effect. Those are the, that's the low hanging fruit, right?
That's what I'm talking about. The rest of them or the other ones have waiver. That's the one we're talking about. The rest of them, or the other ones have waivers in effect right now. There's not a lot we can do except watch for when their waivers.
Yeah.
Do.
Right.
Um, there are, is there one that's currently in the transition?
Yes.
Part of the waiver was when the property sells that they would be connected and we have contacted those people that are purchasing it and.
Well, there's one that's marked as fifty percent complete. Is that in pro- in progress or is that, was that a stopping point? This is the Cory property at four thirty-nine.
You got someone you guys just approved?
Yeah, that, that, that hookup is actually complete now. On Friday, he was halfway to the building and now it is complete and he's hooked on, so we're all set with that one.
And, and he hooked on both the house and the trailer?
Uh, there's no trailer there. They, they removed that two years ago.
Ah.
Great, okay.
Then, yes, proceed.
Hills Garage is changing ownership?
Has changed.
Yeah.
They closed.
Well, it's just that Hale still five is like, okay.
Yeah, we reported that a few meetings ago, that it's selling and becoming a Bobcat dealer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the buyer was notified.
Is it?
A connection would be required.
And they don't get a occupancy permit until they connect.
Well, these uncooperative properties. I hate to bring it up, but are we allowed to shut off the water?
They don't have any.
What?
Well, some of them don't have any, but no, I would say we wouldn't go in that process, but we, we start the process and we can force them to.
So, okay. There's methods and.
There's methods.
Techniques, okay.
All right. Very good.
You don't need anything from us then. You have a consensus.
Direction if you guys wanna move forward or not, so.
I hope that we make a consensus that this, we should proceed with the, uh, non-connected, uh, non-waiver locations.
Absolutely.
And bring them to a conclusion.
Yes.
Yeah, no, they should proceed with the plan.
Yes, I think we're all in agreement.
I make that a motion. Have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, finance policy review.
And I beg that I was away and did not, I'm not prepared, but I do have things I wanted to work on. Not saying we don't do it, but I'm just saying.
All right.
You wanna, what, you postpone this?
Well, I, I think it's good to have it on the continuing. I'm just saying, I personally am not ready to vote.
I have no problem.
But I have no comment, yes.
Yeah, no, we can push it. There's no.
But I do wanna continue. I'm not saying push on, definitely.
No, 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 no.
I personally normally would read it if I get on Thursday, but I'm.
We'll bump it to the next meeting?
Okay.
That would be, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Would you mind bringing your printed copy so I don't have to waste?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No question.
I'll, I'll try to remind you.
And that's it, other than public comments?
Are we, no, we're.
What?
We have a resignation, which I'd like to, to, we somehow find a way not.
Uh, I make a motion that we accept the planning board alternate resignation for Whitney Baker and express our thanks for this.
And regret.
And regret and wish you well.
Very well.
Exchange for doing here.
I'm gonna charge you for finding your, your replacement, by the way.
She has tried.
Yeah, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to send?
And thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
Okay, now we're down to administrative, administrative.
We've done one.
We have a non-public.
Yes. We have a non-public. So before we go into non-public. Are we public comments?
I have a public comment, but I can go after the public.
What was the issue about the Mascoman Lakeside Park appointment?
Nothing.
It's just a form they have decided.
They've already done the.
Okay.
We'd already.
We're going non-public?
I make a motion to go into non-public.
Did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Oh, wait, gosh, that's right. I'm so sorry. Um, the Enfield Village Association, um, put up their new downtown signs. If you saw them, they are fully funded. By the Village Association. That didn't cost tax dollars because not only were they funded by them for the materials, they're volunteers with them. And so I wanted to. Thank to the Enfield Village Association and then just note that New Hampshire gives, um, is on June tenth and eleventh, and we have a number of local charities. Um, that serve Enfields participating. Um, Enfield Village Association is one. Visions for Creative Housing is one. Friends of Mascomas one. I am sure I'm missing somebody else, but just throwing that out there if you feel like handing out some charitable dollars.
Okay.
Now I can make the motion to go into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three Roman numeral two small a.
So we'll have to close the door.
Yes, yes.
Second in a row.
Yeah.
All seconds.
I mean, F.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Is he?
Uh, Tracy, aye.
John, aye.
Derek, aye.
Alice, aye. You guys, you gonna say?
Yep, yep.
I'll try and make a remark.